Good evening and with the regular meeting of the Edgecombe County Board of Education, October 10, 2022, please come to order. The public may view this meeting via the link provided. Please join me if you will as we stand and pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing a minute if you will as I take a point of privilege, personal privilege, and let us bow in the moment of silence for the death of one of North Edgecombe students who was penalized on yesterday. Let us bow in observance of his life and legacy. Amen. You may be seated.
Thank you.
Item number 2.1 Employee of the Month, Ms. Hook.
Good evening, Board Chair, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board, Superintendent Dr. Bridges. I'm excited to announce the October ECPS Employee of the Month. Sharika White King is the District Mental Health Specialist. According to EC Director Brooke Sykes, Ms. King is a true go-getter when it comes to communicating with families and providing resources to connect them with mental health services. In addition to serving students in schools in times of crisis, Ms. King coordinates with community agencies and other partners to bring relevant programming and resources to the staff, students, and families in ECPS. She led the charge to ensure that every student who needs it has access to mental health services during the school day. She leads with her heart and a dominion for excellence. Congratulations to our October Employee of the Month, Ms. Sharika King. Surprise!
We treat her together here.
Did you see somebody behind you that you knew?
Congratulations. Absolutely.
And I'd also like to add that Greg Sessoms, who's a State Farm agent, will be getting a gift card to you this week, okay?
Okay.
Absolutely. Thank you. Congratulations.
At this time, I'd like to invite my special guest up front, Ms. Rhonda Campbell with Smithfield Foods to make her presentation.
Thank you all for just giving me just a few minutes of your time. Rhonda Campbell, I'm the Sustainability Manager with Smithfield Foods. Part of my job is to find opportunities that will help support the communities where Smithfield has a business presence, communities where employees and contract growers and their families live and work. Our Community Development Program focuses on our commitment to education, hunger relief, and veterans. As education is the forefront of that commitment, tonight I would like to present you with a donation of $5,000 from Smithfield Foods to be used at your discretion on any educational program or programs that you see fit. We wish it could be a lot more, but we hope this will open a door for some partnerships between Edgecombe County Schools and Smithfield Foods. I would like to extend an invitation for those that are interested to come and explore our facilities and learn more about our business practices. We would also like to have the opportunity to visit your classrooms, attend career fairs, or any other opportunities that where you, where we could partner with you to help develop and educate our future generation. Many children today have no idea where the food comes from. We have programs in place to help educate them about food production at Smithfield. Please reach out to me with any request and I'll be happy to try to assist in any way I can. Again, thank you for this opportunity and thank you for your commitment to our children and for your service to our communities.
On behalf of the board and superintendent and staff, all of the Edgecombe County Public Schools, we thank you and Smithfield Foods for all that you've done. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number three, public comment. Hold the sheet. No one has signed. Oh, we moved in. So item number four, approval of the agenda. The agenda is before you and you've had it for some time, had a chance to look at it and round it. Are there any corrections, deletions, or additions to the minutes as presented? I'm sorry, the agenda as presented. Hearing none. Do we hear motion?
So moved.
Motion in second by Board Member Ellis to the approval of the agenda as presented. You've heard that motion in second and further discussion or unreadness. Hearing none. Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Opposers like sign. As have, and that motion carried. Item number five, approval of the open session minutes for September 6, 2022, special call meeting, open session. You've had an opportunity to look at those minutes, September 6. Any corrections, additions, deletions? Hearing none. Do we hear motions for the acceptance thereof?
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to accept our September 6, 2022, special call meeting, open session minutes.
Second.
You've heard the motion in second for the approval of the September 6, 2022, special call minute, meeting, open session minutes. You've heard that motion in second and further discussion or unreadness. Hearing none. Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Opposers like sign. As have, and that motion carried. The September 12, 2022, regular business open session minutes are before you and a correction, deletion, additions to those minutes. Hearing none. Do we hear motion? It has been motion in second by Board Member Jewel. You've heard that motion in second and further discussion, correction. You've heard that motion, unreadness. Hearing none. Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Opposers like sign. As have, and that motion carried. Alrighty, we move along for item number six. The items for information, updates, Dr. B.
Sure. You have a one pager, front and back. You also have a packet that has maintenance updates. In addition to your handout, I've emailed this maintenance packet to you so you see all the updates there, but I will share with you the update, school updates. On the front, you see Principal of the Year. You see the picture there. Ms. Crystal Phillips, Phillips Middle School, was selected by her colleagues overwhelmingly. Ms. Phillips had about half of the votes from her colleagues and others had one vote or two, and so she is our 22, 23 ECPS Principal of the Year, so we're excited. We went out on Friday. She thought that she was going to have her beginning of year evaluation meeting and she was, we had that today, but she thought that was what was going to happen, so she was all ready for that. And then we got on the announcements and announced that she was our Principal of the Year. She was just overwhelmed. That's the first time I've seen a principal cry and just out of, I think she was just happy and maybe surprised. So there's the picture of us coming out to support her. And then at the bottom, you see a visit from Governor Cooper. That was on September 20. We had a few board members who were able to join. That was the same day as your other meeting in Wilson. And Governor Cooper came out. Ms. Mudd did a great job of hosting us. We did a classroom visit to three of the classrooms. One of those classrooms was a scholar teacher, Ms. Dickens, and so we had a great time. You see in the picture, you see Governor Cooper, you see Ms. Dickens, and you see her classroom ambassador. And each classroom he went into, there was a classroom ambassador, someone welcoming him to our school. And so, great visit and we just appreciate him coming out to support us. On the back of your one pager, you see the virtual school and you see the numbers at the very bottom, but let's just kind of talk through. So we have 115 virtual students spanning grades K through 12. There are different platforms that are used for the virtual students, Edgenuity, NCVPS, and the Community College classrooms. So virtual instruction is delivered daily for our K-5 students. Tutors are in place to support middle and high school students, but our elementary students actually have a virtual teacher. As we go through, there are progress reports that are given out each week for students, just in a way to just make sure we can have a little bit more hands-on with our students. Right now, they're participating in some competition things with each other on the leaderboard, and so schools are competing against each other, or students that are virtual from the various schools are competing against each other. At the bottom, you see how many for each grade span, and again, we are continuing to try to build this program and make sure that it's meeting the needs of our students as well as the expectations for our district. So I'll stop there, see if there are any questions from or back.
Unless I beat mine, I don't have one.
Yes, you do indeed. Absolutely. And what I'll ask you to do for maintenance updates, I, you have a hard copy, but I also emailed it to you in a Google Doc. If you have questions, if you would, send those back to me in the Google Docs. I can make sure that I respond to those timely rather than this evening. Okay? All right. Thank you so much.
Questions or comments on either one of those? Anybody? Hearing none. Thank you, Dr. B. We appreciate the updates. Field trip 6.2.
Yeah, so at 6.2, you see field trips that came in between board meetings. You see Tarver High School going to Norfolk State University, doing college tours. We're always excited about that happening. And then if you turn over to your next page, you see Tarver High School, Fayetteville State University, and you also see college tour and a football game, again, in between board meetings. And then 6.3 fundraiser, and you see Southwest Edgecombe High School, JROTC, doing a car wash, and again, in between board meetings. So just wanted to share that information with you.
Any questions or comments? And I'm sure Mr. Coach Best will get with you, but because of death and his family, they were not, they were not Fayetteville State.
Okay. Thank you.
Other comments or questions? Hearing none. Then we move along to local committee reports, 8.1A.
Okay, 8.1A. Again, you see fundraisers. You see several listed, but also in your board book, you see the information associated with each of the field trips or each of the fundraisers. You see West volleyball, volleyball team fundraiser for Krispy Kreme Donuts. You see Carver for cotton press green printing. You see Coca-Wimberly for outreach committee, hosting a fall festival. You see Southwest Edgecombe High School for a raffle. You see Bullock for hosting a family fun night, and you see MMA, the department fundraiser with square one art to sell scholars' art. So several fundraisers listed there. And then if you go on down to 8.2A, you see several field trips, North, Tarver High School, and stocks. And in your board book, you should see the adjoining information from the trip board report.
Okay. Any questions or comments concerning those items?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Best has three requests in here. And my question is, are these the same students? And each trip, he has 42 students. And I guess this would be his class.
I'd say they are, because I've chatted with him about these trips. These are the same students. Something they are. Right. Because I've taken earlier one, but these are the same students.
Each time? Okay.
Other questions or comments? Hearing none. Do we hear motion to accept those consent items as presented?
I make a motion to accept the consent items as presented, Mr. Chairman.
Motion in second for the approval of the consent items as presented. And 8.1A and 8.2A, you've heard those motions in second. Any further discussion or unreadness? Hearing none. Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Opposers like sign. As have, and that motion carried. Item 8B, item action.
Ms. Watson will come forward for Michael's Angels Girls Club and reuse of one of our school facilities.
Good evening, Board Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Superintendent Bridges, and members of the board. I am before you tonight to request board approval of the lease agreement between Michael's Angels Girls Club, which is known as MAGC in the lease agreement, and Edgecombe County Board of Education at WA Patilla Middle School, beginning October 10 and ending this year and ending June 30, 2023. You'll see this lease agreement looks very similar to the agreement that Edgecombe County Board of Education has with the Boys and Girls Club. The intent here is for the Michael's Angels Girls Club to operate their after-school program for between 20 and 25 students at Patilla Middle School. That program will be an after-school program primarily, but they're also interested in offering services for students on teacher workdays and during the summer as well. The program will primarily be an academically focused program where students will receive support with their homework, support with academics, but there will also be a social and emotional component as well. Ms. Chanel Knight with Boys and Girls Club is here, or I'm sorry, with Michael's Angels is here, and we're very grateful for her partnership and are, I am more than happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any comments or questions concerning that agreement? While you're thinking about that, let me say to Ms. Knight, thank you for the work that you do. I am certainly familiar with the Michael's Angels organization and all that you do. We need that and more, but thank you for what you do. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. Do we hear a motion for the approval thereof?
Mr. President, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion.
I'll take president. I'll take thank you. You're going to be my chief of staff.
All right. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the lease agreement between Michael's Angels Girls Club Incorporated and Edgecombe County Board of Education, beginning October 10, 2022, and ending June 30, 2023.
Second.
It has been motion in second for the approval of the lease agreement between Michael's Angels Girls Club Incorporated and Edgecombe County Board of Education, beginning October 10, 2022, and ending June 30, 2023. Heard that motion in second and further discussion, question or unreadness? Hearing none. Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Opposers like sign. As have, and that motion carried. Thank you, Ms. Knight, for all that you do for us. Ask anybody to take a session. Dr. Russell, we can take it to the end of the closed session. That was quick. They know I had his pair over here.
Mr. Chairman, I offer a motion under the North Carolina Open Meetings Law, Section 143, 318, 11A, 1A, 3, and A6, to go into closed session, to consider personnel matters, to consult with the attorney, to preserve attorney-client privileged information, and to prevent the disclosure of student records rendered confidential under the family educational rights and Act 20 U.S.C. 1232G, and the disclosure of personnel records rendered confidential under GS 115C-319 through 321.
You've heard that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Has been motion in second for us to go into closed session via the open, North Carolina Open Meetings Law as stated. You've heard that motion in second and further discussion, question or unreadness? Hearing none. Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Opposers like sign. As have, and that motion carried. We'll take five. We'll take five. Thank you, sir. We appreciate you. All right, ten point one, the approval of the, uh, personnel management.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve ten point one personnel, um, management for the list of personnel.
Second motion.
Motion and second for the approval of ten, uh, personnel management as presented in closed session. You've heard that motion is second and a further discussion or unreadiness hearing none those in favor let be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose is like sign. I's having that motion carried. Ten point one, point two extracurricular activities. Uh, hear a motion on that.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to approve our extracurricular activities for fall sports.
Second.
Motion and second for the approval of the extracurricular activities for fall sports. You've heard that question, that motion and second. Any further discussion or unreadiness carrying none those in favor let be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose is like sign. I's having at that motion carried. Ten point two, closed session minutes for September sixth.
Mr. Chair, an a for motion that we will approve our September sixth twenty, twenty-two.
Okay.
Uh, closed session minutes.
Second.
Motion and second for the approval of the September sixth twenty twenty-two special call meeting closed session minutes. You've heard that motion is second and a further discussion. Hearing none those in favor let be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose is like sign. I's having at that motion carried. The, uh, September twelfth twenty twenty-two regular business closed session minutes.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to approve our September twelfth regular business closed session minutes.
Second motion.
You've heard the motion and this second for the approval of the September twelfth twenty twenty-two regular business closed session minutes. You've heard that motion is second. Any unreadiness? During none those in favor let be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose is like sign. I's having at that motion carried. Items eleven, board correspondence.
No, uh-uh, I do not.
Item twelve, items brought by, uh, board members or superintendent for consideration of discussion. Okay. All righty, hearing none. Can it check yesterday's attention? Hearing none, doing your motion.
Tell her about that other, other minutes that we, I passed that.
That was, uh, yeah, that was a, that was a correction on the September twelfth regular minutes. On the last page there.
Yes.
And paragraph before the last, the motion was made by, remember, Ann Kent four B and then they have four, again, scratch out that four, make that correction. For the S and G, uh, Patrick.
Yes.
All righty.